Good morning, everyone. As we get settled, I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. Excited to welcome everyone to City Hall today. Often before our official business, we do important resolutions honoring events and people in our community. And it is my pleasure to kick off the reading of a resolution declaring June 2019 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, and Asexual Pride Month. And we are joined by representatives from Pride, Dot and Felix. So, and the entire City Council will be reading this resolution together, I think beginning with Councilmember Palmasano, is that right?
That's right.
So, we will go ahead and begin the reading of the resolution and then invite our guests to speak after that's done.
Thank you. All right. This is declaring June 2019 Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, and Asexual Pride Month. Whereas in 1975, Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity and expression, a position subsequently adopted by numerous Minnesota cities and the state itself. And...
Whereas Minneapolis was the first city in the state of Minnesota to adopt an ordinance creating a domestic partner registry. And...
Whereas the city of Minneapolis has been steadfast in its commitment to full legal equality for same-sex couples, and in particular to end the exclusion of same-sex couples from marriage, as well as a public and vocal proponent of the Marriage Equality Statute passed in 2013 by the Minnesota State Legislature and signed by the governor. And...
Whereas the Minneapolis City Council, in partnership with the Minneapolis School District, our legislative delegation, and numerous advocacy organizations, has long advocated for the 2014 passage of the Safe and Supportive Minnesota Schools Act, providing a clear definition of bullying and focused on bullying prevention. And...
Whereas, just as a quick aside, thank you, thanks to Council Vice President Jenkins, the city of Minneapolis's Transgender Issues Work Group was established in March 2014 and has hosted the annual Minneapolis Trans Equity Summit since 2014 to support and continue to raise awareness of the social, legal, health, employment, and other issues critical for the transgender community. And...
And whereas in 2015, same-sex marriage expanded to all 50 states. In 2015, through various state court rulings, state legislation, direct popular votes, and federal court rulings. And...
Whereas in February 2017, the City Council approved the creation of the Transgender Equity Council as an advisory board to the city of Minneapolis, to the city and Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board on the matters of importance to the transgender community. And...
Whereas, this is awkward. In January 2018, Councilmember Philippe Cunningham and Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins were sworn in as the first two transgender council members elected in the Minneapolis City Council. And...
And whereas Minneapolis has a thriving lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual community, sustaining and sustained by so many welcoming organizations, places of worship, businesses, neighborhoods, schools, events, and more. And...
And whereas Minneapolis has benefited from the service and talent of numerous LGBTQIA elected officials on the City Council, the Park and Recreation Board, the Board of Estimates and Taxation, and both Minnesota House and Senate, as well as countless appointed officials and city employees. And...
Whereas Minneapolis annually plays host to the Twin Cities LGBT Pride Celebration, the city's largest outdoor festival, in which Loring Park is turned into a forum for celebrating LGBT pride and those, including allies, who work for it.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council hereby declare June 2019 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, and Asexual Pride Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that residents and visitors are encouraged to participate in the numerous activities celebrating Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month in the city, and in the ongoing work of leading Minnesota toward full LGBT equality.
Thank you so much, everyone. And I think it's powerful to have every council member's voice in unity supporting this resolution. It may seem easy to take for granted the support that we have here in Minneapolis, but we know we need to remain ever vigilant, especially with our federal government, the way it is now. And I think we are proud here in Minneapolis to stand with our community, but we know we have to do more than that, and we have to fight against the discrimination and attacks that are coming from the president and his allies around the country. So, in, with that serious note, I would love to turn it over to say anything you'd want, serious or joyful, about the events of the weekend.
Thanks so much. I'm Dot Belsler with Twin Cities Pride. This year is really a huge celebration, as it's the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots in New York City that really are credited to be the beginning of the LGBT, the modern-day LGBT movement. We are going to have signs across the park celebrating queer women of color, queer trans women of color, all throughout the park this year, and will be carried in the parade in the first unit that celebrates the 50th anniversary of Stonewall. So, we're super excited about that. And really, and then on Sunday, noon to two or so, there will be some movies shown in the park, really kind of hitting back at, at the beginning, beginning of this movement. So, we're super excited. Come and join us. We're just on the street. Thanks. Happy Pride!
Did you want to say anything, Felix?
Just a thank you to the city, City Council, and I hope to see everyone in the park, brave the gray and possible light drizzles, and come out to the parade and the festival.
I'm Lisa Bender. I'm the President of the Minneapolis City Council. I'll call to order a regular meeting of the City Council for June 21st and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Present.
Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Conno.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Fletcher.
Here.
Jenkins.
Present.
Schrader.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. The agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda from council members? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and the agenda is amended. Next, we have the minutes from our June 7th meeting for acceptance. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. That carries, and those referrals are made. The next order of business is reports from our standing committees, and we begin with the report from the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 16 items forward for approval this morning. Item number one is a bond issuance, and it will also be considered in the MCDA meeting immediately following the City Council meeting. Item number two is a license for Moxie. Item number three is a license for Utapelle's Brewing. Item number four is a license for NG. Item number five is a license for Black Walnut Bakery. Item number six is a license for the tasting room.
Item number 14 is a license, regular liquor license approvals.
Item number seven is a license for Bread &amp; Pickle. Item number eight is a, going to be withdrawn, so I will note that. Item number nine is a license revocation. Item number 10 is license, regular liquor license approvals.
Item number 11 is the liquor license renewals.
Item number 11 is the liquor license renewals. Item 12 are gambling license renewals.
Item 12 are gambling license renewals.
Item 13 is a license settlement conference.
Item 13 is a license settlement conference. Item number 13 is a license settlement conference.
Item number 13 is a license settlement conference.
Item number 14 is a license settlement conference.
Item number 14 is a license settlement conference. Now, item 15, our contract amendments with providers for employment and training services.
Now, item 15, our contract amendments with providers for employment and training services.
And item number 16 is appointing one person to the Minneapolis Workforce Development
And item number 16 is appointing one person to the Minneapolis Workforce Development
Board.
Board.
With that, I'm going to move items 1 through 16, noting that item 8, the motion, is to
With that, I'm going to move items 1 through 16, noting that item 8, the motion, is to
withdraw.
withdraw.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Goodman has moved the agenda with that item that is before us on a separate Councilmember Goodman has moved the agenda with that item that is before us on a separate piece of paper, moved for withdrawal. piece of paper, moved for withdrawal. Is there any discussion on the committee report? Is there any discussion on the committee report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny. Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Aye.
Cunningham. Cunningham.
Aye.
Aye.
Ellison. Ellison.
Aye.
Aye.
Goodman. Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next report is from the Enterprise Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam President. I have six items for consideration at council today. Item number one is a contract with various suppliers to help with our employee recruitment services. Item number two is a contract for subscription licenses for policy and procedure management software. Item number three is a contract with ProSci to provide change management certification services. Item number four is about our city assessor's office's KAMA system, and it's a long time coming. Item number five is a contract amendment for hosting and support of our 3-1-1 app with Varant Americas Incorporated. And item number six is something that was also introduced into TPW's committee, and it's about helping us participate and figure out some of the problems that we've been having with location data as it proves, as it is applicable to our 3-1-1 and our mobile app for residents trying to use and report things around the city. Happy to answer any questions, and I move all six items.
Chair Palmasano has moved their committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items carry. Next is the report from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, President Bender. The Housing Policy and Development Committee is bringing forward six items for consideration today. The first three are land sales. The first is a land sale at 2635 Colfax Avenue North to Wilson Marina. Second is a land sale at 1326 Emerson Avenue North to A Vision LLC. This was sent forward without recommendation from the committee, but I will be moving the sale to A Vision LLC as recommended by staff. Third item is a land sale at 2822 Emerson Avenue North to Kit Pravasev. Fourth item is a grant agreement with American Indian Community Development Corporation for acquisition of 1500 Elliott Avenue. Fifth item is approving changes to our Home Ownership Works Program Guidelines to more closely align with the HOW program and the goals of similar city programs, as well as our 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And the sixth item is authorizing a basic service agreement with Mid-Minnesota Legal Aid in the amount not to exceed $650,000 for a two-year period to provide legal representation to low-income Minneapolis tenants facing eviction. And we're also authorizing an extension of the contract at the option of the city for a one-year period in the amount not to exceed $325,000. There's a third piece of that, which is to combine some funds from CPED and the coordinator's office, so that the city coordinator is managing the significant contract to help people facing eviction in our city. I will move all six items forward as read.
Chair Gordon has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings forward two items today. The first is local approval of special laws from the legislative session, and the second is passage of a resolution recognizing World Refugee Day. I'll go ahead and move the committee's report and those two items.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Next, we have the report from the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee brings forward two items today. The first is local approval of special laws from the legislative session, and the second is passage of a resolution recognizing World Refugee Day. I'll go ahead and move the committee's report and those two items.
Councilmember Johnson has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee will report next, given by the Chair, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. And the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee has two items being brought forward today. Item number one is authorizing an agreement with the city of Blaine and the Minneapolis Police Department for mutual aid during large-scale events. And item number two is authorizing an increase to a contract with Aixon Enterprise Inc. for purchase and storage of body-worn cameras, tasers, and CAD integration. Stand for any questions.
Councilmember Conno has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The Transportation and Public Works Committee report is next, presented by the Chair, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 15 items today. Item one is the 2019 alley renovation program, project approval and assessment. Item two is the West Broadway Improvement Special Service District renewal ordinance. Item three is the Northern Spark Large Block Event. That permit will be granted from 14th to 15th of this month. The Stone Arch Bridge, the festival large block event permit, again, June 15th to 16th. The fifth item is the Rock at the Garden Large Block Event from June 29th. Item six is the agreement with the Mississippi Watershed Management Organization and the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for designing a storm sewer system at the Stormwater Ponds at Columbia Golf Course. Item seven is the contract amendment with CDM Smith for the Fridley Campus Industrial Electrical Rehabilitation Project. Item eight is the contract amendment with AE2S Construction for additional services at Pump Station 7, outdoor construction project. Item nine is the contract memo James Corner Field Operations for the Nicklet Mall Reconstruction Project. 10 is the contract memo with Meyer Contracting Incorporated for the Nicklet Mall Reconstruction Project. Item 11 is the contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates for engineering and design services with the Grand Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Item 12 is the access easement agreement for the Metro Green Line Extension. Item 13 is the bicycle advisory committee revisions. Item 14 is the pedestrian advisory committee appointments. And 15 is the sidewalk snow and ice report. I move all items as submitted, Madam President.
Councilmember Wright has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. Finally, we have the report from the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. The Zoning and Planning Committee has seven items for approval this cycle. First is the approval of an interim use permit at 4051 Half Washington Avenue North. Second is approval of an interim use permit at 4530 Lindell Avenue South. The third is the approval of a rezoning for 1121 Fourth Street Southeast. The fourth is the approval of rezoning at 1717 Second Street Northeast. The fifth is the approval of a rezoning for 3025 East Quillavine Parkway. The sixth is the approval of an alley vacation, and for that, I have a motion in front of everyone. It's just correcting some of the technical errors. I'll read that motion, and it's, I just moved to correct the property addresses related to the project submitted by Red Lake Nation, to read as follows: 2105, 2109, and 2113 Cedar Avenue South, as well as 1820 and 1834 East 22nd Street. The seventh item is the approval of a street vacation for the, at 27th Avenue South between 29th Street and Lake Street. I'll move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report, including that amendment to item six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Warszawny.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that report is adopted. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to note, you probably saw some walking back and forth. I want to make note of the fact that item number nine on the city's Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is, it's read as a license revocation for El Nuevo Rodeo, yet it should not have been on the agenda, since they paid the fees prior to the committee meeting. And so, it accidentally got onto the agenda, and the clerk wanted me to make sure to clarify for the public and anyone here who was wondering why I was wandering around, that they have it written down and noted as deleted from the agenda. But I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, and they had asked me to make that announcement.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Just to clarify, with the clerk, no action is required. That will just be a clerical correction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. All right. That concludes the committee reporting and approvals. So, the next order of business is the notice of ordinance introductions, and we have one notice today from Councilmember Johnson to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance related to amending regulations to prohibit any use of perk in dry cleaning facilities. Do any council members have questions on that notice? Very exciting. Seeing none, that notice is given, and no further action is required. Next, we have six items on the introduction and referral calendar today. First, pursuant to notice, councilmembers Palmasano, Fletcher, and Cunningham moved to introduce and give first reading to and refer to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Administration Code relating, related to preventing wage theft, adding overtime and break requirements, and restricting city contracts from being awarded to entities with outstanding wage obligations. Thank you to so many people who came here today, I imagine, for this item. Second, pursuant to notice, councilmembers Fletcher, Palmasano, and Cunningham moved
the project submitted by Red Lake Nation to read as follows: 2105, 2109, and 2113 Cedar Avenue South, as well as 1820 and 1834 East 22nd Street. The seventh item is the approval of a street vacation at 27th Avenue South between 29th Street and Lake Street. I'll move all for approval.
Councilmember Schrader has moved the committee report, including that amendment to item six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Connaught.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
No on item number one, aye on the items.
Schrader.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes in the report except for number one, which has 12 ayes and one nay.
That carries and the report is adopted. The next order of business is notice of ordinance introductions. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to note, you probably saw some walking back and forth. I want to make note of the fact that item number nine on the City's Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, it's read as a license revocation for El Nuevo Rodeo, yet it should not have been on the agenda since they paid the fees prior to the committee meeting. And so it accidentally got onto the agenda, and the clerk wanted me to make sure to clarify for the public and anyone here who was wondering why I was wandering around, that they have it written down and noted as deleted from the agenda. But I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that, and they had asked me to make that announcement.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Just to clarify with the clerk, no action is required. That will just be a clerical correction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. That concludes the committee reporting and approvals. So the next order of business is the notice of ordinance introductions, and we have one notice today from Councilmember Johnson to introduce at the next regular meeting the subject matter of an ordinance related to amending regulations to prohibit any use of perk in dry cleaning facilities. Do any council members have questions on that notice? Very exciting. Seeing none, that notice is given, and no further action is required. Next, we have six items on the introduction and referral calendar today. First pursuant to notice, councilmembers Palmasano, Fletcher, and Cunningham move to introduce and give first reading to and refer to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Administration Code related to preventing wage theft, adding overtime and break requirements, and restricting city contracts from being awarded to entities with outstanding wage obligations. Thank you to so many people who came here today, I imagine, for this item. Second pursuant to notice, councilmembers Fletcher, Palmasano, and Cunningham move to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Administration Code relating to establishing freelance worker protections. Third pursuant to notice, councilmember Connaught moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Licensing Code related to amending provisions for the establishment of new tobacco product shops. Fourth pursuant to notice, councilmember Gordon moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Zoning and Planning Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the zoning code related to amending regulations governing the height of accessory structures. Fifth pursuant to notice, councilmember Fletcher moves to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the subject matter of two ordinances to amend the housing and licensing codes related to amending provisions related to short-term rental dwelling units and short-term rental housing platforms. Lastly pursuant to notice, councilmembers Cunningham and Ellison move to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance to amend the Housing Code related to amending rental dwelling license reinstatement requirements for management plans to be approved by the police department. Are there any questions or discussion from councilmembers on any of those introductions? You don't see anything? No? Okay. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed, say no. That carries and those ordinances are referred to the appropriate committees in the next cycle. The next order of business is resolutions, and we have the honorary resolution read earlier today. Actually, I believe there were two, but I'll just check the written agenda. Just way back here. All right. Okay. So we just have the one, because the other was at IGR on the IAG agenda, and that was the Pride Month honorary resolution. All those in approval, please. Oh, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just before we approve that resolution, I just wanted to take a moment to kind of reflect on the intersection of my own identity and this historical moment that we're all witnessing as a part of, and hopefully working to create a more equitable society. And certainly, I'm referring to the 50th anniversary of Stonewall and all of the festivities and parades, and yes, protests that will ensue this weekend. But I'm also referring to Juneteenth, the day that recognizes the delayed emancipation for enslaved peoples in Texas. It is also the 400th year that enslaved Africans arrived on the shores of this country, and earlier this week, the House of Representatives introduced and held a congressional hearing on the bill HR40 to establish a commission and commits resources to determine a strategy for reparations for the descendants of enslaved peoples. I believe that we recognize all of these realities, and including the elimination of poverty, standing up for reproductive rights and women's rights, immigrant rights, disability rights, homelessness, and environmental justice as intersectional and as deeply related. And if we are ever to achieve full equality, dignity, and humanity for everyone, we must all be working to resolve these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President, and thank you for your extraordinary leadership, not only here in our community, but nationally. Council Vice President is one of many of these amazingly talented councilmembers that are national leaders on so many of these intersectional issues. With that, anyone else? All in approval, please say aye. Aye and opposed, say no. That carries and that resolution is adopted. Councilmember Cunningham, did I miss you? Go ahead.
Yes, that's okay. We're in the workflow. I just wanted to first say thank you to Council Vice President Jenkins for those words and really bringing in the intersectionality piece of it. I just want to really raise the leadership of Minneapolis in terms of, in comparison to the rest of the country. Right now, we see at the federal level, the Trump administration trying to erase trans folks and take back any sort of small progress that we made during the Obama administration, whether that is removing protection guidelines for trans kids in schools, whether that is trying to define gender as what you are assigned at birth and that it's unchangeable, whether that's banning trans folks from serving in the military. There have been small, little attacks that just are in the news for a fleeting moment, and then we move on to the next outrage, but that has huge repercussions for our community. And so I don't want us here in our bubble of Minneapolis where there's two trans council members to forget that the reality, this is beyond just an exception. Like, this does not happen. There are no other legislative bodies in the country in which there are two trans people. So it is our responsibility here in Minneapolis to ensure that we continue to remain at the forefront of transgender equity, recognizing the humanity of our community, and doing, you know, the resolution may seem like a small, regular, sort of, annual gesture, but it's a big deal in this time when our community is under attack. So thank you to all my colleagues for reading, taking part in this, and thank you to Council Vice President for all of your leadership that has made this possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. So that resolution has carried and is adopted. So the next order of business in our agenda is unfinished business. There is one item that was initially postponed from the May 17 meeting, which is a license application from the Blue Door for a permanent expansion of their on-sale wine with strong beer license and to add a sidewalk cafe. I'll recognize the Chair, Councilmember Goodman, first on this item.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have resolution on this matter, and I'd like to yield to Councilmember Johnson to move the action in front of you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President, and Councilmember Goodman. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve item 11, and item 12 is amended to approve a sidewalk cafe license with seating for 10, as set forth in the revised sidewalk cafe proposal that's in the legislative file.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson has moved unfinished business item number one, which is before each of us on a separate page regarding the Blue Door in Longfellow. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.